Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Common Council of the City of Huntington for November 25th, 2025. Prior to the business meeting this evening, we'll have an invocation led by Pastor Scott Rainey from the First Church of the Nazarene, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kristi Miechelhanyi. Those who wish to participate at this time may rise.
Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts. As we approach Thursday and the celebration of Thanksgiving in our nation, today we want to prepare our way for that time with hearts that are thankful to you for all that you have done for us. Thank you, God, for sending your Son, Jesus, into this world to demonstrate by his life what it looks like to have a good relationship, a perfect relationship with the Father, and calling us into such a relationship through your grace, through the death and resurrection of Jesus. Lord, I pray that you would bless our families through this week. I pray that you would keep our roads safe. Thank you for all of our police and first responders, and I pray for their protection over this busy holiday season. And I pray that your face would shine upon our homes and that there would be love and joy within the home as people look to you in thankfulness. Bless this city council today, I pray, as they work through the challenges of this city and the blessings of this city. May they be inspired by your Spirit to go the direction that you would have us to go. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that then, we will call the business meeting to order, beginning with a roll call. Kristi?
Brodigan is absent. Chapman?
Present.
Felton?
Here.
Funk?
Present.
Johnson?
Here.
Pike?
Present.
Renssberger?
Present.
Thank you. Moving along on the agenda this evening, having established a quorum for the conducting of city business, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing for additional appropriation ordinance 22(c)(25) from the General Fund, Public Safety Lit, and Local Road and Streets. Public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public here to address council on the matter? Not seeing or hearing any at this time, we'll close the public hearing for the additional appropriation 22(c)(25) and move along to the public hearing for additional appropriation ordinance 23(c)(25), GeoBond number four. Open the public hearing at this time. Are there any members of the public here to address council on the matter of ordinance Seeing or hearing any members of the public to address council on the matter, we will close the public hearing and move along to consideration of the minutes of the previous meeting from November 12th. Is there a motion to bring those minutes to the floor for consideration and adoption?
Second.
A motion and second. Further discussion and consideration by council members? Not seeing or hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of adoption of the minutes as submitted. Kristi?
Chapman?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving along to reports from committees, boards, or commissions. Charlie?
Yes, I'm going to introduce Tim Allen. He's the Director of the Public Safety Dispatch for Huntington County. For the benefit of our scouts, all of the councilmen here are members of different and various boards, committees, and commissions that help the city operate. And by statute, the mayor and President of the Council is part of the dispatch board. And we meet periodically and talk about issues pertaining to dispatch and what you know as 911. And we have some changes that are in the wind, so rather than have me stumble through it, I asked Director Allen to come and lead us through some updates that are happening with dispatch. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. They told me I only got 45 minutes, so I'll try to keep this short. Some good news.
He mispronounced "two minutes."
Oh. Okay, correct. Got a couple of bits of good news I wanted to share with the city council. First, we, the dispatch center, our 911 lines are finally now being served by fiber. We switched from copper lines to fiber lines about two or three weeks ago. The same copper lines that we made the first 911 call in Indiana back in 1968 are now done. It is a relief. We had struggled, honestly, with connectivity for some time. When it started getting heavy dews, truthfully, it got a little damp, we would start losing connectivity. That is fixed, and we are very excited to move to that fiber. We're currently also trying to move off of copper for our radios, our 800 radio system, and move that to fiber. It's a little bit more of a challenge because AT&amp;T is the provider for state 800 lines. We do not have any fiber from AT&amp;T in this county, so they have to use last mile help. They don't like that very often, and it's been a real challenge. But we are now in the, I'd say we're rounding third base, and we should have fiber hooked up for 800 system in the next, hopefully about the next month. A lot of help from the state to get that done, it's a big deal. It really is. Our system is absolutely flawless, as long as you have good connectivity. And so that will be handled, and we are in business. And that's something we have worked towards, certainly I've worked towards for the last probably five or six years. And it really put an emphasis on it once we moved out to our new location out of Victoria. It's happening, it's happening now, and I'm quite relieved, and it saves us money even because copper costs a little bit more than the fiber because we need several copper lines and we need one fiber line. So we're going to save about $1,200 bucks a month cost and have significantly better The last thing I want to bring up here is we are going to be moving into a new phone system. The app that I gave you gives you some breakdown. Seven years ago, before I started here actually, right before I started here, a couple of months before I started here, the Emergency Call Works was purchased from Motorola to be our phone system. It essentially was a less expensive version of a phone system, mostly made for smaller dispatch centers like ours. Motorola was known for their Vesta phone system, which is really world-renowned, is the best in the world, but it was also two and a half times more expensive than this was, and so we went with Call Works. It's been a great system for us, it really has. We haven't had too many issues, they service it well. They told us, and we found out in April of this year that they were going to sunset that product, which essentially means they were no longer going to update it. And that means the same thing it means to your phone, to your computer. You don't do it for a few times, you're going to have problems. So we began to look for a solution. Motorola understood that we still had three years left on our contract. We had a 10-year contract for our radio and our phone. So they were kicking this to the curb a few years early, they needed to do something for us. And we weren't the only dispatch center in the state that was suffering or at least going to need to find a solution. So the directors kind of banded together and approached Motorola at once and said, "What are you going to do?" So they've actually done the right thing. They have significantly discounted the Vesta product for us so that we can afford it. Instead of being around a million dollars, they're selling it to us for $292,000. That is something we can afford. Our 911 fund is healthy, and commissioners approve any spending out of the 911 fund, approved of this purchase last week. I went to council, county council then on Tuesday night, and presented to them what was happening and wanted to make sure I came and saw you guys and gave you the same courtesy. This is a big deal. Majority of our work is with the city, police and fire departments, truthfully, and so, and from the residents that live in this city. So switching to Vesta does a lot of things. Mostly it brings a second-to-none phone system into our dispatch at a discounted price and solves a problem that we thought we were going to have here in three years, and that is how we're going to afford what's next because we didn't think we'd have Call Works after year 10. There would be some change, and at this point, now that will be taken care of. And I'm really excited about it. Just to be comparative a little bit, we currently pay $55,000 a year, just a little over that for Call Works, and about $20,000, a little over $20,000 a year in maintenance fees for our phone system. Vesta, and we are going to purchase this in just one lump sum, it's going to save us a little interest money, but if you break it down in yearly costs, it'd be $43,000 a year, and our maintenance fees are only $14,700. So we're going to save about $18,500 a year over the next three years. It's not a ton of money when you're talking about buying equipment like we buy, but it's nice, and especially to be able to move up in class and really have an outstanding product we can trust. I'm, one other thing I just want to add, and Digital is a local company, and local as in regional, they work out of Fort Wayne. They are going to be the supplier of this. Motorola is allowing them to be the go-between and provide this product for us, and they also service our 911 lines. So now it's a one-stop shop. We don't have to worry about calling AT&amp;T to do the lines and call Motorola to take care of our phone system. This is all just one company that's going to handle the whole thing. That simplification, I think, is going to make it very, very nice. Granted, we don't have a lot of work that needs to be done on this, it's going to be a new product, but it is nice to be able to call somebody 30 minutes away and we can get somebody here and her. So I'll answer any questions you guys have. I was told, Tim, if you go longer than about five minutes, we are going to revolt. And so, but I wanted to certainly bring you guys up to speed. This is important to the city, certainly, and I wanted to make sure you guys.
Didn't you tell him we wanted the Ed Roush discount on his thing since he?
You know, I wish I'd have thought about that because it would have been great. We actually have a display down in our dispatch center, right outside the dispatch center of the first phone call that was made back in 1968 with Mr. Roush's picture on it. It's a very, it's something that I know we were very proud of. It's hard to believe the legacy that's left. 911 is known all over the world as the emergency line, and it just started from some guys' good ideas. So moving from the same exact lines probably that he used back in that day and to something that is more state-of-the-art and up-to-date is exciting, and it reminds us of what we're working on.
Back in my day, we had the Pony Express, you know.
Any other questions, guys?
So did Motorola just void the remaining three years?
That's a good question. I'm sorry, yeah, that's a great question. They are just going to write it out of the contract. We'll still have the radio part of it on the lease agreement that we have, and we'll pay that for the next three, but that'll lower our payments. We pay about just under $100,000 a year for the radio, and that $56,000, $55,800 will go away from that payment, which is, again, savings in itself is nice. Getting this type of a system at this type of a price is nicer. I'm really confident in this product. It is used in New York City, in LA. I mean, this is a, this is a big, this is a really important product for us, and it's tried and true. This is their, this is the one that they push and the one that they're proud of and the one that they've serviced for decades. So it's not going away. Hopefully, we'll use that thing up. Yeah. I appreciate you saying that. I like to talk to people. So I, it wasn't too hard to reach out to guys that thought the same thing I did. And they were all shocked. We learned about this at the summit Motorola hosts every year, and literally one of the first things we learned, so we just kind of overheard this was happening, and we stomped over to them and said, "What's going on?" "Well, you know, we'll always service what we have under contract." Not a good answer. And then we just kind of started chatting together, and after about a month or two, Motorola came to us and said, "We've got a deal for you." So for the size of our dispatch center.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, I would also add that looking at some of the reports, the average time to answer a call is about four seconds.
Yeah.
And the dispatch center is within, better than 99% of the goal that they do. So we have an extremely well-run and efficient dispatch center.
Yeah, just so you guys know, we take about 55,000 calls a year, and of those, about 15,000 911 calls, which I'm always amazed at that number. Crazy, but people have problems, they call. We have the I-69 running through our county, that increases the phone traffic considerably, 911 calls in particular, and we're getting to that time of year where it's going to start getting a little crazier. But yeah, be proud of, I'm proud of what we do. You guys should certainly be proud of it, too.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Moving along with updates. Anything else, Charlie?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Paul?
Nothing here.
BJ?
Nothing here.
Todd?
Huntington County Economic Development Board, we have, we're down to two replacements for Mark Wickersham, and we're going to, we're negotiating with one right now to try to figure out if we can get it done and get him replaced. And so it's in the process, hopefully towards the end, and we'll let you know when we get somebody. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Andrew?
Yeah, RDC met. Our budget is good for next year. We've got a lot of plans in place to work on commercial and industrial development, hopefully some residential as well. And then also, we got an update on HK Porter, and Bren, if you want to come on up, I'll just let Bren give you guys an HK Porter update. Yeah, so that should be almost done, finally. Back to follow. Two minutes. I have some photos. None of them are from today, but as Andrew kind of indicated, last night, we had a meeting of the Reuse Advisory Committee here, council chambers. Paul was here and Andrew were here. So I'm happy to report that as of about noon today, all of HK Porter is on the ground. It is a twisted pile of what's left steel and brick, what hasn't been hauled out, and so that's what they'll be working on tomorrow before taking a break for Thanksgiving. These are just some of the photos that I've been able to capture when I've been out on the site almost daily, just to pop in and see, walk it, answer questions. And then there's some drone photos, and these are kind of chronologically, so you'll see as we work our way through there. I'll just give you a little bit of background and explanation. So they are wrapping the trucks with visqueen, the guys are in full hazmat suits, they have perimeter dust monitoring around the site, there's even one of the guys that has a dust monitor strapped to him, and so they are monitoring for particulate in the air. They're obviously using those fire hose cannons that they have to keep the dust down, and you know, the more you get into the bowels of the building, so to speak, the dustier it does get. And so they really hit their stride when the second excavator showed up and were able to start knocking stuff down. I think in their biggest swing in a two-week stretch, they took 60% of the building down. Looks a lot different from what it did. So where they are now, like I said, the last of the building went on the ground today. They'll be working to pick up and segregate out the steel that will go in for the recycling, pick up the bricks, they've got some trenches to fill in with stone, and then they're going to start final cleaning of the slab, and so they'll spray that off, capture that water, treat that, dispose of that properly as they need to, and then we'll be left with the slab. And so the next logical question is, where do we go from here? And I don't want to understate the accomplishment that, where we are as of today with that building down. I know for me individually, it's been probably about 15 years in the making. It's been 11 years since the city's redevelopment commission took title to the property with the goal of this. It's been two federal brownfield assessment and cleanup grants. It's been a lot of testing, a lot of public meetings, a lot of applications, a lot of paperwork, a lot more testing, a lot of working with the state and the feds just to get us to that point. So couldn't be happier with where we are, couldn't be happier with the job that Omega, SME, and all of our partners on this project have done. Last Monday, I had a meeting with EPA's regional office in Chicago, their on-scene coordinator, and that, obviously, since the federal government reopened, we were able to have that meeting. Our goal now is to get this grant closed out, project wrapped up, and the grant closed out. And so that includes hitting that last quarterly report that we will have to do for the feds, expending all the money. Kristi and I are getting ready to pay about a million-dollar bill to the contractor for their next, you know, pay-up. And so there's a rule in the federal appropriations or whatever it is that you cannot have an active brownfield grant and also receive on the same site emergency response. And so emergency response would be what the fed, when they mobilize and they would come and do. So we have to fully close that grant out before they're able to actually start doing things. What they can do while we still wait to close that grant out is they can come and they can game plan, they can write their action memos, they can send that up the chain of command to get approved, they can talk with their subcontractors and providers and get cost, time some things out scheduling-wise, and then be ready to mobilize to the site. My goal is that, obviously, the building's down, we will have Omega wrap up by year's end, we'll close out that grant probably. I'd like to do it by the end of the year, but that's becoming more and more unrealistic just because holidays and we effectively have a month left and things like that. And so there's a little bit of paperwork involved with that sort of stuff. So we'll probably do, close out by the first quarter of next year. That's fine, we're going into winter, there'll be snow flying, no contractors are going to want to be out there doing that. So all that to say, what the feds will be doing, these are from late last week, some of the most recent I've got. What the feds will do is they will come in and they will sub-slab sample. So they're going to go below that slab, you know, 100 years' worth of industrial operations to see what all we're dealing with. As of now, the early indications, no surprise, what we've dealt with on the site all along, lead and asbestos that are, you know, conceived to be under there. You've got to think of that building, it was originally a U shape, and then they've added on and added on, and every time, you know, they've kind of probably built over some stuff and things like that. So get a sense of what we're dealing with under there. One of two things happen. If it rises above a certain level, those federal guideline levels, then the, our friends at the EPA will likely come in and do an emergency removal action. The scale and scope of that reaction, response, and action remains to be seen, depends on how bad it is and how widespread it is. But as I told the folks last night, it's kind of a double-edged sword. Do you wish that it's real bad that they come in and remove the slabs for you and remove the contaminated soil and do it back up? Well, that's one way of looking at it, but that means it is, in fact, that bad. The other reality is it does not rise to that level, and then it's on us locally to remove the slabs and that. But in that case, it's better because you're not dealing with contaminated soil. I think we're going to be somewhere in the middle, there's going to be hot spots and there's going to be okay spots. And so what that looks like remains to be seen, but we'll get through it. And so that's where we will go next, is testing, abatement of the sub-slab stuff, and then, you know, and that sub-slab includes the concrete and the soil that may or may not be contaminated below there, and then, and only then, will we be, have a clean site that we know we are ready to do something with, and we can open up that sort of array of options as to what that is that we do with it. Because one of the things that I've cautioned in all of my meetings with, whether it be the RDC or the Reuse Advisory Committee or just the average citizen, is that I don't want to start talking hypotheticals because you have residential closure guidelines, you have commercial closure guidelines, and depending on what you are able to reach, and that is really a function of how much money you're going to throw at dirty soil and concrete is to what you're going to be able to do with that in the future. So we will continue to move this along. It is a marathon, it is not a race. The last 14 years, 15 years have proven that, but we are there. Questions for me? I think we cycled through them all. Site?
Yeah.
12 acres. About 12 acres, the buildings that were left are about 90,000 square feet. It's not just me, but I appreciate it. Anything else? Want to keep it shorter? Tony?
You're good. You came with pictures, yeah.
Thank you, Bren.
I couldn't tell.
Andrew, anything else?
That's it, thanks.
David? Okay. Not aware of any petitions or comments from citizens this evening. Under old business then, we have second and final reading of ordinance 22(c)(25) and additional appropriation ordinance. Kristi?
Ordinance 22(c)(25). This ordinance, if adopted, would provide additional funding to the Local Own Street Fund, Highway Construction, 2202-018-434, General Fund, Borderworks Computer, 1101-001-397, City Hall Water, 1101-002-353, City Hall Building and Fixed Equipment, 1101-002-421, Fire Overtime, 1101-006-119, Fire Equipment Repair, 1101-006-362, Police Drug Seizure Forfeiture, 1101-010-324, Public Safety Lit, 2240-001-397, and Public Safety Lit Equipment, The total additional appropriation is $335,564.50.
And is there a motion to bring ordinance 22(c)(25) to the floor for second and final reading and adoption?
I'll move.
Motion and second. Further discussion and consideration by council members. Not seeing or hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of adoption on second and final reading of ordinance 22(c)(25). Kristi?
Felton?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving along the agenda, the second and final reading of ordinance 23(c)(25), additional appropriation ordinance of GeoBond number four. Kristi?
Additional ordinance 23(c)(25). This ordinance, if adopted, would provide additional funding to the GeoBond number four fund. It's Improvement Project, 3320-001-411. This is the GeoBond $2,494,000.
Is there a motion to bring it to the floor for consideration and adoption on second and final reading of ordinance 23(c)(25)?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion and consideration by council.
Yeah, I apologize, I wasn't here last meeting. This is the full amount that we were asking for. Does that mean, and it says for designated, or specific designated projects, these are still things we vote on before it's released, correct?
So all of the potential projects in this will be brought back to council before there's action taken on those projects?
Okay, thank you.
Further question and discussion? Not seeing or hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of adoption on second and final reading of ordinance 23(c)(25). Kristi?
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Thank you. Not aware of any new business for the go of the order this evening? Any miscellaneous items?
I have a question. Division Street, we didn't have lines on it before. Did we spec the lines on the road in the middle, or was that something they added? Was that one of our specs to put the metal lines on the road?
Director Cuttriss, welcome to the podium this evening. You have more than two minutes.
Yes. In conversations between myself and Superintendent Bischof, we decided to add a center line down, or down, sorry, down Division Street as part of the reconstruction of that, yes.
Okay. Can it be moved over? Reason I'm asking is because if you guys have driven on Division, everybody parks on the one side going up the street, nobody parks on the other side, but the line's in